All right. I was like, let's see.
Where's that guy that works for us?
I know. We're just gonna drag.
Do we have a signature? You guys just gave it to me.
Yeah.
Joke's on me already.
Already? I just hope not.
Hope they got everything. That's better.
It is one o'clock, time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Today it is Commissioner Ortiz's time, our turn to do the pledge of allegiance and the prayer.
Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's about with me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the moisture that you've provided. We thank you for all the wonderful things that you've created, Lord. We just ask that you continue to bless us. Bless us with your love and your nature and everything that happens with your hand in glory, Lord. We just ask you that you be in our hearts today as we go through the items on the agenda, Lord. Be in our hearts as we make decisions today. Lord, we ask that you be with our first responders, our police, our firefighters. Lord, be with everybody in our community. Lord, we ask that you just bless us and keep us safe. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Next up is approval of the meeting, or approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting. Were there any corrections that needed to be made? Okay, if not, they stand approved. Next up is public comment. This is a time for anybody in the audience to come up and talk about anything you'd like that is not on the agenda. And you will have five minutes. And please state your name and where you're from. Okay? Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to allow under section 635 and 6133 the possession, consumption, and sale of cereal malt beverages or alcoholic liquors on the sidewalk streets and public park areas on the following dates and times, June 2nd, 2023, from 8:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. June 16th, 2023, from 8:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Same time for July 7th, July 21st, and August 4th. All of these would be for adult night swim at Garden Rapids at the Big Pool.
I move to approve these requests as presented.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7, at this time, we'd like to draw your attention to the 2023 Citizens Academy graduates. Jamie?
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. Last Thursday wrapped up our eight-week 2023 Citizens Academy program. We had 21 people go through their program, participate, and graduate. This year it was a little different. It was eight full weeks, so we were able to tour more facilities. We toured the wastewater treatment plant, we toured the Jameson Energy Center, we went out to the golf course and forfeited to the cemeteries. And so they got a lot of tours this time. But I want to thank the participants for joining our program. I also want to thank all the staff that had the same late, on Thursday night, that they really did a phenomenal job, highly due to the work that their department does for the city. So I would like to recognize the participants, and then afterwards, I'll give them a quick picture. As I call your names, if you're here and would like to come up, that'd be great. Ellman, Jack Broderick, Rita Diaz, Ernesto Farrell, Daryl Freyoff, Ginger Colorado, Lindy Just, Holly Carhoff, Eric Lonzo, Sari Merelms, Erica Montrose, E.J. Oaks, Ashley Euler, Erica Ramirez, Leslie Randolph, Juan Rico, Crystal Rohas, Pat Sanders, Brian Thomas, Sante Thompson, and Adely Wilson. Thank you for your participation.
Great.
So Jamie, you were the master of ceremonies?
Yes. I have to make multiple rows here. Shorty, go as you get. Okay, it's always easy, so. Okay, is that on the table? Are you guys...
Where are you playing? Over here.
I'm trying to see.
For good. Here.
See us off?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Good evening. I appreciate it. Item C, we would like to apologize and address a recent post that was shared on May 4th that was subsequently removed, and this post was on our social media platform. We understand that there were online followers that were offended by the post and understand the frustration with the post. We recognize that the post could be viewed as offensive and insensitive. The city strives to provide various avenues for communication and encourages residents to engage through those platforms. It is the city's practice to keep all posts active and only restricts comments if they meet one or two criteria. One, the use of profane language, or two, includes a direct threat. Now, the May 4th post was removed, which did not follow the city's social media policy and procedures. We recognize this mistake and understand that frustrations have been expressed about us removing it. It is not the city's intent to restrict anyone's comments or opinions that are shared via social media, and will review our practices and procedures in conjunction with our written policies to help address these issues moving forward. So the prohibition against removing posts outside of the listed exceptions is for the purpose of maintaining the public record and the trust of the community through transparency. As such, we are attaching to this agenda item cover memo the post and the subsequent comments that do not violate the city's social media policy so that they may be preserved for the public record. We have removed those that would either use profane language or included a direct threat. We couldn't simply repost it because doing so would have done without all the attached comments, which were plenty. So this is, this item serves two purposes. One, to publicly account for and report to the City Commission our mistake. And two, to provide a way that that information, both our post and the response to it, remains part of the public record.
All right, thank you.
Any questions on... Item D through G is a, are all staff reports. Any questions on either the airport report, fire department report, service and finance report, or zoo monthly staff report?
No, I'd just like to point out that he didn't touch on point C on the city entry report.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. I'll go back and hit that. If there aren't any questions on the other, yeah, good news. This Buffalo Dunes Course renovation project was awarded $40,000 from the Kansas Tourism Division, which is a division of the Kansas Department of Commerce, in the most recent round of attraction development grants. And there will be a ceremony at 4:30 p.m. tomorrow at Buffalo Dunes Golf Course, where they will present us a big check. And you all are welcome to attend that. So golf course and big check, it'll just be, just like the movie. So we're excited. That's a great project. It's received a tremendous amount of attention. We think it met the letter of the, of the attraction development grants, and we were glad to submit something that the state of Kansas felt similarly excited about, and we're glad to have them as a partner in this project. Meetings of note, outside of the one that we called your attention to tomorrow. One of those has already happened. That was the Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony. It was very nice. Thank you to the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department for putting that on. And a reminder that the next time the commission gathers in this room will actually be the town hall meeting on May 30th. We have three weeks between now and the next business meeting. We're ready for item 9A. 9A is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be 2579-2023A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2579-2023A. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Items 10A and B are scheduled public hearings. We haven't reached those times yet, so if it's all right, we'll move on down to item C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the attached resolution allowing Garden City to participate in the Kansas Moderate Income Housing Grant Program for the Garden City Multifamily Project on behalf of Garden City Destination Development LLC. And if approved, it would be resolution number... Do you have a resolution number?
2958.
That's the, that would be the ordinance, no, extraordinary number.
I do not have the resolution number. I'll get it though.
All right. Let's hit pause on that. Do we have sufficient time to take up 11A and dial in Mr. Schulte?
It's, yeah.
Yep.
It's about 20 minutes. Until, let's see, until the 1:30 maybe?
Yeah.
We could, we could, we could potentially get him done. I told him we might be after both hearings, so he may or may not.
3009.
Well, or we can keep going through the resolutions. Thank you. 3009.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The Kansas Moderate Income Housing, or MIH, program allows cities incorporated in Kansas with a population of fewer than 60,000 people to request grants or loans for infrastructure and or housing developments in rural areas. Recently, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation added an MIH ARPA process request for proposal that allows larger projects to submit funding requests. Grants or loans through that program will be limited to no more than $3.5 million per awardee. Communities must establish a need for housing. We have done that through the housing, the community housing assessment team, or CHAT, report that we do every two to three years, and in that it clearly articulates the need for housing in Garden City. Government agencies through this program apply on behalf of the developers, and a resolution of support is required by the governing body to give the city the authority to apply for and participate in that program. We had one of these projects before you earlier this year, so this is the second round of funding. So in this round of funding, we have one project, the Garden City Multifamily Project. This property is generally located in the 3500 block of East Shulman. The developer is asking for a $2.5 million MIH ARPA grant to use for the development costs to construct 76 units of both one-bedroom and two-bedroom. The project also has paid and covered parking, a tenant clubhouse, market amenities, but the grant will be used for the housing component of that project. With that, we also have to make sure that the zoning is appropriate, and they've gone through and started that process to get that underway as well. Two alternatives before you this afternoon. The first is to approve the resolution of supporting the MIH ARPA application for the Garden City Multifamily Project, or you could deny that request. SAG recommends the approval of the resolution as presented, and there is no fiscal note related to this, even though the city is the applicant, the developer is the cost related to the program.
I thought this was a great project the first time. Unfortunately, we can only choose one, and so that, there was a second round of funding. I think that is a, that's a unique opportunity to go and honor all the work that's already been done. So with that, I want to move that we approve resolution number 3009-2023, a resolution go ahead and approving the, supporting the MIH ARPA application for Garden City Multifamily Project.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Items D through H are all nuisance resolutions. We will, we will go through the full staff report on the first one, and on the subsequent ones, we'll, it's all the same background, we'll just give you a different resolution number and the location of the violation. You're welcome to visit at length about any of those that you have questions on. Item D, and if approved, this would be resolution 3010. You're asked to consider and approve remediating an environmental nuisance at 157 Cloverleaf Road. Daniel? John?
It has been determined that the residence located at 157 Cloverleaf has an environmental nuisance on property and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. It is located in the rear side of the property. Staff has visited the property on many occasions and have sent out two letters on March 22nd and April 16th. Property owner and residents were unable to be reached and no contact was detected by the property owners. The property owners have neither evaded the nuisance, the nuisance conditions, nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow SAG to mitigate the environmental nuisance on the property. There are two alternatives before you today. Either the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. And SAG recommends the governing body approve the resolution. There is a fiscal net. The vacant cost incurred by the city shall be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the environmental nuisance is located.
I move to approve resolution 3010-2023.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, if approved, resolution 3011-2023 would remove an environmental, or motor vehicle nuisance at 923 North Ninth Street.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3011-2023.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, if approved, would be resolution number 3012-2023, removing a motor vehicle nuisance at 2607 C Street.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3012-2023. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, if approved, it would be resolution number 3013-2023, removing a motor vehicle nuisance at 157 Cloverleaf Road.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3013-2023.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, if approved, would be resolution number 3014-2023, removing a motor vehicle nuisance from 152 Shamrock Street. Sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3014-2023. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I believe 11A probably require more time than we have, or 12A would require more time than we have right now. 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Great Plains Development Inc. for the city membership and participation in the amount of $4,350. The governing body approved a membership last year with Great Plains Development in the amount of $4,050. It looks like the membership fee's gone up this year, and that is above the minimum membership fee, but in a comparable amount. We would recommend the approval.
I'll motion to approve the membership agreement and pay $4,350 membership fee. Alternative one. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just like to point out a couple of things when I saw in the report. One is that when they were listing out the projects awarded for our county, it was completely, completely random. So it was really hard to find out what was awarded recently. Like, and projects go back to like the 80s in this list. So it'd be nice if Bob could maybe give us a list that shows us kind of in a more logical way, even alphabetical would have been ordering, but chronologically would be ideal. And then also, for Garden City to have the business base that we do and the entrepreneurs that we do, it was odd to me that over the course of, I'm guessing since the 80s, whenever this data goes back to, it's odd to me that they've been able to help Dodge City at twice the rate of Garden City. So, I mean, he's not here to ask any questions. It'd be just interesting to see why there's such a discrepancy over three decades, when in general, we do have a bigger business base and a bigger entrepreneurial base than Dodge City, yet they have more projects go through it. And maybe it's just a case of something from the, some big projects back in the 80s or something like that, that it was just kind of hard to see what was going on, but...
Well, I do appreciate that, you know, economic development also uses this as part of, when they're helping entrepreneurs, as part of their packet of expertise or, you know, possible sources. So I do think that's really helped, and I think also the city using that during COVID, you know, and also, you know, for the ARPA funds, I thought that was a really good use and a logical place for them to do. But again, I do think we could make better use of this, and yeah, the report was, it was hard to, it was hard to read.
Very hard to read. And the numbers just from the totals, Dodge has taken advantage of, or Ford County, Ford County's taken advantage of 71.7 million. We've taken advantage of 37.7 million. So, I mean, that's a pretty big difference for, from communities that are roughly equal to us being larger. So, anyway, just something to point out.
You're right.
Is there a motion? Do you want to tailor it?
We got a motion. We got a second.
Oh, I already, I'm just really not with it right now. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the statement of qualifications from Burns &amp; McDonald in response to the request for qualifications advertised for the water reclamation and reuse project. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider these qualifications presented today. For background, Congress approved a funding bill in December 2022 that included a congressionally designated appropriation to the city of Garden City to implement a project that reclaimed treated wastewater to benefit portion of the Oglala offer that serves the city of Garden City. That legislation provides $19.1 million in available funding to pursue this reuse project. The Environmental Protection Agency is the federal entity administering these funds for the city of Garden City, and as a result, the city solicited a request for qualifications to firms to assist the city with the engineering planning and administration functions resulting from the use of these grant funds. The city's solicitation for a qualified firm is required to ensure that these services are competitively procured. The RFQ was developed by city staff based on prior work completed regarding our water reclamation efforts and as outlined in guidance documents that the EPA has provided the city. Leading up to this project implementation stage, the city has developed a title of 16 feasibility study and water marketing plan, both of which have been approved by the Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation in 2019 and 2022 respectively. The content of the RFQ that is in front of you today is based on that work and was reviewed by staff at EPA and approved for solicitation. Staff delivered RFQ documents to three firms, Wilson &amp; Company Professional Engineering Consultants P.A., herefore known as PEC, and Burns &amp; McDonald. In addition, the city advertised the RFQ on the city website, Garden City Telegram, Facebook, LinkedIn, and in an edition of the Kansas Municipal Utilities Newsletter. The RFQ opened on April 3rd, 2023, closed on May 3rd, 2023, and the city received one proposal, a joint statement of qualifications from Burns &amp; McDonald and PEC. Or the proposal, Burns &amp; McDonald will be the principal entity, and a copy of the RFQ and supporting documentation is attached to your agenda item. Myself, city engineering staff, and senior staff members reviewed the RFQ response, and should the governing body select the respondent as recommended, the city will work with this firm to develop an agreement subject to approval for the city's established procurement guidelines. Also, should note, any negotiated agreement must also comply with procurement standards for the federal funds dedicated to this project. Your alternatives today, the governing body may select Burns &amp; McDonald for engineering work related to the water reclamation and reuse project, and direct staff to negotiate an agreement for services compliant with local and federal procurement standards, or the governing body may not select Burns &amp; McDonald and direct staff to find an alternate solution. The city recommends the governing body select Burns &amp; McDonald for the engineering work related to the water reclamation and reuse project, and direct staff to negotiate an agreement for services compliant with local and federal procurement standards. This selection in itself does not pose a fine fiscal impact. If selected, though, the results of the negotiation with the firm will comply with city's procurement standards, and funding for the project may be shared among various enterprise fund departments based on project scope as it develops. And today, Jake White with Burns &amp; McDonald was down here, and I'd like to give him a moment if he wanted to address the governing body.
Mayor Commissioners, really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all today. For some of you, I've seen you before and talked before about this very important project. For those I've not yet met, very nice to meet you. We've been working with Garden City for over six years now and really developing this concept of wastewater reuse. Obviously, the benefits of a project like this are immense. This is a game-changing project. I will link to Garden City, but for Fannie County and the entire state of Kansas. So really excited to move forward. If you all have any questions of me at Burns &amp; McDonald for qualifications, be more than willing to answer those.
Any questions?
No, your qualifications were very impressive, and I really appreciate that you're also bringing PEC on. I think that's, they've done some incredible work in Garden City also, so what a neat partnership and an opportunity to work together, so...
Absolutely. We recognize that, and since all from Garden City.
All right. Thank you.
So Fred, I have a question. Is the 19.1 million has already been awarded or will be awarded based upon finishing up some of these, these items?
These funds are reserved for the city of Garden City. So, once the engineering component of it, once we have an engineer working on this project, specific to this project, we've had Burns &amp; McDonald working for it with us for a number of years, but there are a few things that we need to complete, primarily a preliminary environmental review, and then essentially just getting the, the project applications submitted. But the funding for the project is reserved for the city. So we have a few preliminary steps. Those are all outlined in RFQ. If you ever want to refer to those, we should give you a good roadmap for kind of the direction we'll be going after we get the agreement included.
I make a motion, we select Burns &amp; McDonald for the engineering work related to the water reclamation and reuse project, and direct staff to negotiate an agreement for the services compliant with the local and federal procurement standards.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
I think we're ready for the 1:30 public hearing. It's back on. Item 10A, 1:30 public hearing for the governing body to consider and approve the ordinance vacating the alley north of 2885 Prairie Avenue. And after you open the public hearing, or after you hear the staff report, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, you'd be in a position to discuss and consider ordinance number 2958-2023. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. This, the city of Garden City requests that the governing body approve a proposal to vacate a public alley in order to construct a fence north of 2885 Prairie Avenue. The alley has no city utilities underlying served by Cox Communications or AT&amp;T. The alley has a steel main, which is a gas line that runs through that alley that was recently installed by Black Hills Energy. That serves the empirical food facility. A public easement would be given for the maintenance of infrastructure through the replating process of this if it's approved, and a notice of proposal to vacate was sent out by certified mail to Cox Communications, Black Hills Energy, and AT&amp;T, and no one contested it. Alternatives will be, you may approve the, you may approve this or another, or you may not approve it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We'll open up the... We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this?
Mike, I have a question.
Yes.
The property that I'm circling with my mouse hand right now, I have an adverse interest argument to get back to this right of way, because while it appears from the...
There's a dedicated easement there, Matt, where you're driving north.
There's a dedicated easement, okay.
That's how, that's why that property had access.
Thank you.
And the reason they wanted to vacate that alley is windows were built, they were built right against the north property line of their property, and they have rental units that go in on the north side, so there's no way to fence it, and have still an access to their property, so they agreed that if the city would vacate that and grant an easement, then it would be a moving fence in that little piece.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll close the hearing.
I move to approve ordinance number 2958-2023, an ordinance vacating a public alley within the city of Garden City, Kansas.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We still have 15 minutes until the next one.
I think we can do item D. Oh, let me give you a... 12D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve, oh, I'm sorry.
Please note that Commissioner Ortiz is a step down.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve changes to fire station number three in the EMS building, and authorize engineers and architects to redesign accepted value engineering changes. Chief Ursick?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Prior to the preconstruction meetings, the total estimated cost was $15.6 million, which included $13.375 million for the construction of the building and remainder balance of the contingency insurance. After two meetings across the construction, architects, Fannie County EMS director, Spores, and myself, we were able to thoroughly review the project budget and identify areas to reduce the cost without compromising the quality of the project. The team essentially offered the values near 31 items, reducing the cost of fire station, fire station three and EMS by $2.4 million to $13.2 million. The cost savings are resolved in number of factors, including changes in specification of the building and in work finishing these resources. Some of the larger items include landscaping within the den house, modifying the signage, and roof angles, the building, removing car butters pole, reducing number of bathrooms and EMS, change of various finishes and construction material, updating some mechanical electrical systems. The next phase of the preconstruction is to meet with engineers, architects, to redesign drawings, and update specifications in accordance with our desired value engineering changes. At that, it's completed, guaranteeing maximum class to be established. Alternatives four, the governing body may approve the changes to the fire station three and the possibility to authorize engineers and architects to redesign accepted value engineering changes. Alternative two would be the governing body to design a request to provide further guidance, representation by staff, this option one, and much of the structure is out of the sales tax for about one.
So chief, does this keep you still on schedule for building or breaking ground on the fire station, or do you have to, or there's going to be a long delay due to the changes?
Shouldn't be too much of a delay. I'd walk away. We're most expecting a delay to the...
So you're still on your time schedule?
Keep moving forward, hopefully. Play some Urban Ball.
Okay.
Kind of tells us exactly, but...
Yeah. Okay.
Any other comments?
I move to approve the changes to fire station three EMS building and authorize engineers and architects to redesign accepted value engineering changes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone want to let Commissioner Ortiz?
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a utility equipment purchase agreement with Metal Arc Dairy LLC.
Afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The electric division was approved by Metal Arc Dairy Nutrition for a faster source transfer electric power switch at their dairy processing plant in Garden City. The current transfers switch does not meet the speed requirements to keep the plant equipped and operating properly in electrical power interruption. They had agreed at the original development of the switch, but it is not currently meeting their needs. So, the bid documents were issued on March 24 of this year. Four bids were received and opened on May 5, 2023, at 3:00 p.m. and ran out loud. DFA and city staff have reviewed the proposed equipment for pricing, delivery, and specifications. Standing Electric has estimated the lowest bid of $121,052.93. If approved, the governing body today, the utility equipment purchase agreement spells out the conditions of the agreement in that Metal Arc Dairy Nutrition LLC will pay the city for the equipment within 30 days after both parties sign the agreement and the equipment has been ordered. The alternatives are the governing body may approve the utility purchase agreement and accept a bid for Standing Electric for $121,052.93, and authorize the mayor to sign the utility purchase agreement, or the governing body may not approve the agreement or bid and direct staff to find an alternative. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the utility purchase agreement and accept a bid from Standing Electric for $121,000... Got a little discrepancy here, but it's... $121,052.93, and authorize the mayor to sign the utility purchase agreement. The physical note is the expense will come out of the electric department additions budget under GL 5015, 1511, 59, material distribution. And the reimbursement for receipt by DFA will also offset the expense.
The only, I was really, I mean, now, reading through the bids, they look identical. I mean, they all met your specifications. I was just surprised that one was half the price, so I, that was kind of shocking. Is it, is it going to be delivered within a time? I know a lot of these items are now backordered, and it takes a lot of time, or...
Their timeframe was 30 to 45 weeks, and depending upon material availability. So, yes, we looked at about a year delivery time from past experience, so it's going to still fit within DFA's timeframe. It's going to delay the process as we, well, they brought this proposal before us last year, and they decided not to proceed with it.
Any other questions?
No, I move that we approve the utility purchase agreement and accept the bid from Standing Electric for $121,052.93, and authorize the mayor to sign the utility equipment purchase agreement.
A second.
Removed and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for proposals sinking design and installation services from qualified firms or individuals for the installation of exhaust emission control units in Allen Shelton Central Fire Station and Labrador Fire Stations. Chief Ursick?
Yeah, Mayor Commissioner. Upon completion of the McGrath report, installing exhaust emission controls in the Allen Shelton Central Fire Station and Labrador Fire Station, John will give priority one recommendation on the McGrath organization. So, in December 2021, the Garden City Department applied for assistance to fire, according to FEMA. In September of 2022, the Garden City Department received notification of approval in the amount of $83,272.72 in funding. As a condition of this grant, we require that the issued non-federal funds equals or greater than 10% of the federal funding we have ordered. $8,327.20 for a total approved budget of $91,600. The request for proposal will be used to identify qualified individual strengths for installation for exhaust emission controls located in both fire stations. Alternatives four, the governing body may approve the RFP to identify qualified individuals for installation of exhaust control systems. Alternative two, the governing body may deny the RFP and provide product guidance and staff programs. Alternative one, and to gather the 25 account handle, approve the funding.
I move to approve the RFP to identify qualified individuals for installation for exhaust emission control system.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Jamie, it's still a little bit hot up here. Feedback, thanks. We've still got a little bit of time. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Nolan?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has three open positions of the seven, one combined that we added more after we combined Public Barons and Tree Board, and then also the Parks and Recreation Board. But we have an application from Victor Herata. He submitted an application to be considered for an available board position. His application was presented and reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at the regularly scheduled meeting held on April 24. Victor is an IT Systems Administrator with Cobalt Cattle, and also coaches soccer at Garden City High School. Victor previously served on the Downtown Vision Committee and the Cultural Relations Board with the city of Garden City. Victor is a lifelong resident of Garden City and wants to influence positive changes for younger generations. We have three alternatives. The governing body may approve the appointment of Victor to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through December 2025. Second alternative, the governing body may deny the appointment of Victor Herata to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And then the third alternative, the governing body may give staff further direction. Recommendation, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommends the governing body to approve the appointment of Victor Herata. There's no fiscal note in the law.
Great choices.
So it would take advantage of that WAC championship soccer coach?
That's right. That's right, yeah, it's good.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Victor Herata to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through December 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
We're kind of piecing together an agenda flow here. Apologize to anybody that's tracking us going through here. I'd recommend we skip over H2. I don't think you're going to go through the budget in three minutes. Consent agenda items, would you like to take those up?
Sure.
If nobody would like to remove and talk about any of those separately, the appropriate motion would be items I, 1 through 5.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda for items I, 1 through 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That took one minute.
Yeah. We didn't talk long enough.
We're close enough to talk slow?
Yes.
Item 10B, a 145 public hearing. Let me find it. It'll take a little time to find it here. Hummer Drive, yeah. A 145 public hearing for the purpose of the governing body considering approval of vacating Hummer Drive, and if approved, this would be ordinance number 2959-2023. Mike?
Good afternoon again, Mayor Commissioners. The city of Garden City requests that the governing body approve a proposal to vacate Hummer Drive. The infrastructure within this development was never constructed and is not desired by the current landowner, which is Fannie County, assorted they own all the surrounding property. The public street has no city utilities underlying certified Cox Communications, AT&amp;T, or Black Hills Energy. A notice of proposal to vacate was sent out by certified mail to Cox Communications, Black Hills Energy, and AT&amp;T. None of them have, there's no facilities in there. Alternatives would be that the governing body may approve the ordinance and vacate that property. The governing body may choose not to approve that, and staff recommends that the governing body approve over the number of 2959. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I will open up the public hearing if there's anybody who would like to speak. Okay. All right, public hearing is closed.
I'll make a motion we approve ordinance 2959-2023. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd recommend that we take up the, we've got the state theater issue remaining, the budget remaining, and then the item 11A, the consideration of electric service providers, since the people in the room are present for the state theater project, would it be okay if we took that up first?
That would be fine.
And then we'll call Mr. Schulte following that and finish up with the budget.
Okay.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and review proposals for use of the state theater and provide staff with additional direction. Danielle?
Good afternoon again, Mayor Commissioners. As you will recall, back in February of this year, the city commission authorized the release of an RFP for the future use of the state theater. Proposals were received on April 26, and we received three submitted in total. The first proposal was submitted by Mr. Pamplin. He, his proposal was to remodel the building into a state-of-the-art 500-seat live entertainment venue. The second proposal was submitted by the Fannie County Preservation Alliance in collaboration with Garden City High School, and their proposal is to lease with the potential for future ownership the state theater for nonprofit use as a theater, playhouse, and concert hall. The third final proposal was submitted by the Tumble Week Festival, and their proposal is to renovate the building into a bar and venue space to host performing arts events, educational workshops, and community gatherings. Each proposal, two of the three proposals have representatives here, and they can, and I think are prepared to provide a high-level overview, or they are here to answer any questions that you all may have related to their proposal. And ultimately, staff, we are requesting direction from you all, if any, of these proposals that you all would like to proceed with. Depending on which path you all want to go down, there will be different kind of next steps identified. Or alternatively, if there's a desire of the city commission, we could also develop a more robust public outreach process to gather input on each of the proposals. In the RFP, we did allow for people to submit ideas or ideas related to the future use of that facility, and we received two communications through that process, which are also included in your, in your agenda packet. So, you have a number of alternatives before you. One would be to select one of the three proposals, and again, depending on which of those, if you wanted to go down that path, would dictate on the next steps. Or you could direct staff to conduct a robust public outreach process, in which point we would put together kind of what that will look like, and bring that, bring that back to you at a future date, or provide alternative direction. The fiscal impact, staff has no recommendation, but the fiscal impact will vary depending on, again, which of the proposals is selected. And in your agenda packet, we tried to put together kind of a high-level overview of each of the proposals as well. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like to hear from each of the kind of proposers, we could do that as well, and you can ask them your questions directly.
So there's only representatives for two of the three proposals, which makes it hard to ask questions on all three proposals, but I think I'd like to hear from the two that are here, if that's the will. Just, you know, a brief overview would be great. So, Mr. Pamplin, if you'd like to go first?
Mayor Commissioners, I want to thank you all for opening this up to proposals again. It's a very exciting time for Main Street, and I'm really looking forward to it. I will take your questions, and then if I have anything to add after that, I will certainly do that, so...
So I'll ask the first question. So, this is kind of the second go-around for you with the state theater, the third? Okay, so...
Because a lot of you that know how much I like to talk about this.
Right.
I'm trying to keep this under an eye.
We'd appreciate that. We'd appreciate that. No, but, so my question is, why is this proposal different than past proposals?
This is, comes from the financial part of it. This time, I will be looking to the city for funds. I've also sent this proposal to Representative Clifford, Representative Lewis, and Jerry Moran, who Jerry and I had a wonderful discussion. He was staying at my hotel, and so they would be a monumental help for any kind of grants or anything through the state and through nationally. I'm also working with the YMCA as they are going to be my fiscal sponsor for donations and things like that. What I really wanted to think about it, and a few years ago, I was driving around, it was right during the COVID time, and I had driven by the water park. And I sat there and looked at that, and I said, you know, why can't we do something like that for the state theater? I don't know how you structured it, I don't know what you did, but it was like, why can't we do something like that at the state theater? Now, I would love to have a guarantee of, it's going to cost millions of dollars, $2 to $3 million, and that's just from somebody who, I had just, I had talked with a architect about that. And that's to do the whole thing. And I thought that would be great, we could get a guarantee from the city for that, so we can get moving, so we can get started. But then do a dollar in, dollar out, that if we get a grant for $500,000, then the city takes out $500,000, you know? And right now, there's a grant for the Jayhawk Theater, I don't know if you saw that, but they just got a $5 million grant to refurbish their theaters. The one thing that I did run into in trying to raise money for these things, if the city is not behind it, if you just say, here's the building, go, good luck. If you're not behind it, people aren't taking it seriously. So I look at it, if we can do an effort like we did for Clint Lightner Field, the water park, what we're doing for Buffalo Dews, the skate park, this is quality, those are quality of life things, this is a quality of life item. It also terms around Main Street. We have, I walked down Main Street this morning, we've got eight empty buildings on Main Street. This theater, the way I want to run it, I'm hoping to have it going 40 weekends a year with 12 weekends to reach out to the Somali community, the Hispanic community, the Asian community to do things down there. Somebody's going to open something down there. I don't want a dinner theater because I want Flat Mountain to do well, I want Ninjas to do well, I want Possid to do well. So, but things are going to open up down there, and this will show that the city is serious, and that with all the things that have gone on and are going on in this city, I think organically, with the theater being open, things will get done down there.
So my question, so this idea, so you talked about either $2 to $3 million. So as far as, so thinking about, because we did those through GO bonds, is that right? No, we, how did we do the water park? I can't remember now. It was a lot of money, but.
Yeah, you were shooting that.
So I'm curious about, so this idea of, who would actually own the theater? Would it be the city owning the theater?
You would own the building.
Okay.
You would own the building, and my business along with the YMCA is a fiscal sponsor, so we can raise money continually through that. You would rent it to my business.
Have you already established a nonprofit for?
Well, the Y would act as the fiscal sponsor, so they could run grants through that.
Okay. That's smart. How long would it take you to get this up and going? Because I know, so say that you have the dollars today.
Boy, you know what? Let's put it this way, how fast did you guys do the water park? That thing from get-go to get opened was, what, two years?
Yeah, it takes a lot.
So, you know, we got to put a building inside of the building. I need it upstairs, I need rehearsals based on, we're going to have continually operating theater hopefully, again, 40 weeks a year. Also, really, my ultimate goal is we need to get this to theater projects, if you guys have looked at that company and what they have done worldwide and how large a company this is. They're working on $40 million arts project down in Dallas right now. So, but I would like to get it to them because they can tell you, they do this professionally. I like to say, this would be my dream theater here, but the theater's not built yet. So there's, I would love to do all my theater in the round. I think it's the best way to watch a show, it's cost-effective, plus if I need to change out something, I can do it in a matter of hours instead of many hours. I would like to have a section to be able to re-remove because I can do it for seating stage, that's better for stand-up comedy, it's better for some plays. So I would like to be able to have it adjustable, and when I brought that up with Gina Bueller from Theater Projects, she said, no problem, we do it all the time, so. But I would like to get it to them. If we could get it to them and find out the feasibility report, if we could find out exactly what we're talking about, then I think we'd go with a little more confidence.
So would the city, so your plan then would be to have the city pay for the renovations and the feasibility study, and that would be on the construction piece or the upfront costs? What about operating costs? Is there a subsidy, a yearly subsidy that you project that?
No, I think we can go and we can raise corporate funds through the YMCA, and we would be season ticket-based. I would like to produce six shows a year, three to four weekends, depending on how many seats we have, that's probably going to be close to 8,000 seats I got to fill. So, but a season ticket base plus a Christmas show, be it It's a Wonderful Life or Christmas Carol, and then the outside things we bring in, tribute shows, stand-up comedy, music, anything like that would be separate.
So you're pretty confident that the feasibility study would come back positive for this and for your plan?
Yeah.
So how did you determine? Because I know that theaters, I mean, shows charge you based on the number of seats that you have, and I was trying to find how many seats that on the auditorium at the high school had, but, so how did you come up with the 500, the 500 seats?
I measured it when we had the theater there. It's a little bit bigger than the theater I worked at in Glendale, California, that this is based on, which they had 450, and, but that will probably be adjusted. Like I said, it's big enough to put 500 in, but depending on if we're going to have removable sections or something, it could drop down to 400, it could drop down to 375. So I'm, right now, I'm being flexible with everything.
I remember attending a show there last time, I think you did a show there, and the seats seemed really small and very close together, but.
Yeah. So what, are you talking about the?
The state theater. Yeah, no, the one that you did a long time ago, so I can't remember what it was.
It was in the odd level amount.
Yeah.
Well, and this is another thing, too. I was told by every theater person in town, I said, you need to do three weekend shows, and they said, you'll never have anybody on the third weekend. Every single show I've done, five shows we've done, we've done three weekend shows. Our last weekend was our busiest weekend. Not only that, after the first week, every single show outnumbered the show before. So, and when I asked people, and we were taking surveys on what happened, how did you hear about this? They said, word of mouth. Word of mouth. So, and our season tickets will be pretty reasonable, in the 150 to 180 area. When people talk about a dinner theater, I'm saying, well, your ticket just went up to $69 per show, for, because if you look at what the depot has to charge for tickets, I think it's $55. And I'm trying to keep my ticket prices in the 20s, so.
Any other questions? All right.
Nope.
No?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I hope you have a great, great day.
Thanks, you as well. And I don't see anybody here from Tumbleweed, so, Mr. Nelson?
Good afternoon. Brian Nelson with the Fannie County Preservation Alliance, and the last time this total amount, we also had a submission, so this is our second attempt, but the Preservation Alliance's focus is to preserve our cultural and architectural history. You know, when you look at our State of Mal, Schulman, the Fox, there's a really rubber stamp, Main Street's where we have our character. And one of the things the Preservation Alliance really focuses on is highlighting our individual architecture. So we want to do a full historic restoration of the state theater, so it looks like the 1929 building that was meant to be, the beautiful art deco building. And there's some photos here, as you can see with your packets, but it was really well-done. So that aluminum facade that's on it, that's what is currently hyped, and that's what's hiding back behind there. I also stand on the Landmarks Commission for the city, and we have been looking into getting Main Street on the National Register of the Historic District. One of the things holding us up is what we call the slipcovers, those aluminum facades, because once you become a national, you're on the National Register of the District, those facades are stuck on the buildings, you can't take them off, because they are considered to have character to them, and we've been slowly seeing them pulled off, most recently Flat Mountain Brew House pulled theirs off, and if that Upland Department Park, they pulled theirs off, and they just look really great when those are pulled. Of course, we do want to keep a couple of those in town just to have examples, so our examples in town would be Collings, Trokeys, and the building right next to us. So those are the ones we like to keep. But we want to pull that facade off, show off what is beneath it, and restore it to that 1929 feel. There's still a lot of good historic bones in the building, so that's what we would want to bring out. And for the most part, we want to keep the layout of the building, not do a huge remodel. So we want to keep the auditorium-style seating, not dig out the sloped floor and make it like a dinner theaters, because the Preservation Alliance's goal is to create one venue space downtown with the Windsor Hotel and the State Theater, and they're working together. So we can have those small business conferences, conventions, that will bring people downtown and hopefully then they will invest some time in shopping downtown. Also, of course, with the two, we'd have like a perfect destination wedding venue between the two spaces, with the state theater's auditorium, the hotel's atrium, there's just a lot of potential there. Our master plan for the Windsor also includes having a fine dining restaurant on the ground floor. So, you know, again, you could leave a show from the state theater, go across the street to the Windsor, and next door to Ninja, just have all those dinner options. The Preservation Alliance, of course, as you know, has its hands full, so the actual board of directors would not be taking on this project, it would be a committee that is formed to take on this project. And we would be working with Garden City High School. So the goal would be like the state theater entertainment advisory board would basically be setting up a plan and advising a class created at Garden City High School, where the students are doing the planning. So they're planning a capital campaign, they're planning fundraising events, and they're carrying those out. So I'm currently one of the student council advisors, and we recently broke student council into two groups. We have our campus-based group that works for everything on campus, and we have a community group, and that's the one I'm in charge of, so just getting StuCo out to the community trying to take on projects. So my students have done a lot of work at the Windsor Hotel, at the museum, or if they were out picking up trash for about four hours, but when this proposal came back up, I approached our athletic director group, Tom, and said, hey, I'd really like to get student council involved with this, and then that's when he pitched the idea of possible, possibility of an entire class made to focus on this project. So if you want to come up and kind of talk about that for a second.
Yeah, when Brian came up to talk to me about it, we already have a leadership class at the high school that's available. We've been looking for more and more community outreach, getting involved with community businesses and community partnerships. So this seemed like a natural fit for us to get our students involved, anywhere from helping organize a campaign to helping operate the facility, it just seemed like a natural fit for something that we could be involved with, getting downtown and getting our students, giving back to our community. So in that conversation with Brian, you know, we talked and discussed and met with Mr. Norrie, our building principal, he's in the grants, we, kind of like Brian said, we vaulted the class, so if this does happen, we do have anywhere from 15 to 25 students available every single day to come work on the project with Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, and I mean, just working on boards, and I mean, you know how it is, when you're focused on a project, you get that one to two hours sometimes a week, sometimes for a month, and that's all you get to focus on. So we're looking, and this will be a group of students who can focus on it, for the most part, every day, you know, create a website, it's a lot of hands-on learning experience for them. And of course, this also follows the recent downtown master plan, which I set in most of those meetings, and I also invited them to come share it with my students, and my students gave them feedback. But we need, for downtown to be successful, we need those night venues, entertainment to bring some life back downtown. And what we would be looking into is, for the most part, doing all the fundraising on our own in the proposal. I do have a pitch that maybe the city look into investing in a sprinkler system in the building. That is not like it has to be for us. So if the city would say, you know what, we want to see what you can do on your own, we're perfectly fine with trying to raise all of the funds on our own, that would just give us a good start, because the building is more usable other than the terrifying restrooms. But we think there's a lot of potential here, and all of these little cities have one of these old theaters, and we might be setting up a good start plan for other communities to follow, because they have high school leadership rooms and they have that old theater. So if it works well, we might be able to say, yeah, here's what we did, go out through your little theater and bring it back to life. We're also really willing to work with all the interested parties, so, you know, our goal is movie theater, live concert hall, and live performance. So, and I wasn't talking collaboration with the Tumbleweed Festival, we had several meetings, I met with their board, and we were trying to send one proposal, the thing that cut us up mostly was, we were wanting to pull off the facade and do a 1929 restoration, they want to keep it on because it's just cheaper. It's easier to meet your goals funding-wise, but we want to have a jewel of a building, but if we were to get it, we would be very interested in working with Mark and working with the Tumbleweed Festival, too. And part of that is mapping out like a membership program that's partially based off, what are the operational expenses of the building, how many times is that person using it, they purchased X amount of membership, so they're using it boom, 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 many times a year, and that helps cover the costs. So in general, that's kind of what we're looking at, so if you have any questions.
Yeah, so I know, Brian, thanks for the proposal. I know that there is, meeting spaces is upstairs, so I'm curious about ADA compliance, would you have to put in an elevator, or because it's a historic building that's not required?
So you could, I mean, elevator, you're looking at anywhere from probably $600,000. So for the most part, the meeting space that we have up there might be more limited to like, if it's a board of directors meeting and they want to use that space, then they have the access to it up there. But again, this is working with the Windsor Hotel, so let's say you know who's coming, and if someone needs that access, they're just over at the Windsor the whole time, they don't have to go upstairs in the state theater. So let's say you have a convention that has a small breakouts, you might start out in the auditorium, but then a small group might go upstairs, or as needed, they might go across the street to the Windsor.
So then you don't have to bring the building up to ADA compliance, or?
Well, it's only for people who have to get upstairs.
Upstairs.
And we're looking at putting in the bathroom in the basement and a handicap-accessible restroom on the ground floor.
Can you talk a little bit about the coffee shop plan?
Yes, so we would love to pull in a late-night coffee shop with this plan, and it kind of ties with, you know, high school students are always looking for a place to go up that's safe and it's open like to do their homework, but what would be tied to this is, we have a coffee cart program at the high school, if you're familiar with it. It helps pretty much with life skills for students who need it. So what we'd be looking into with that coffee shop is pulling in an employment opportunity for those kids who are in the program at the high school, because currently, that's great for them at the high school, but again, it's life skills, once they leave the high school, that option isn't there for them, and we're looking at taking that concept, applying it to that coffee shop at the state theater, so those students who graduate from Garden City High School can then go on to the coffee shop at the state theater.
So as far as the work done, you know, I mean, the building with that, I mean, I never. never seen the picture like this. So, who has to do that work? Is it something that a contractor has to do or is it something that people, that you can have, you know, maybe?
Depending on what it is, like Student Council at the Windsor Hotel, it's sweeping, staging and painting. It's the pretty limited stuff. When you get more into the constructional stuff, I mean, the plumbing electrical, of course, is going to have to go to contractors. But, I mean, if you look at that photo, I mean, we're playing with the historic bones and it's kind of hard to see, but on the lower portion of the walls, there's a tattered teen tile. And, you know, that's another one of those historic features is still there. It's been painted, there's carpet on it, but that might be one of those community projects where you pull the carpet off, get the paint off of it to shine it up. So, again, that's something that you don't need a contractor for versus like putting maybe lights and plumbing throughout the building. And for the most part, we're wanting to keep the footprint of the building with the exception, if you look at the plans I gave you for the ground floor. So, we would be looking at shortening the auditorium a little bit and expanding the foyer area to what it was originally, because originally there's a pair of twin staircases that come down and reflect each other in the room, the lobby. When they remodeled the movie theater in the 60s, they wanted to get as many seats in the auditorium as possible, so they cut out a big chunk of the lobby and pushed the wall back. So, now that one of those staircases was taken out, one is still in the auditorium. So, most of our remodeling would be pushing that back and then adding the retail storeroom where it's 418, because currently that's the lobby again. And that could be designed where maybe it's just lounge with seating or a little business incubator or just a really small business that that's all the space they need.
So, I know that Preservation Alliance, you guys have been around for what, 32 years? And you've done some incremental work here and there with the Windsor. And so, how do you feel you are as a, you know, as the Preservation Alliance and where you would like to be with the Windsor?
Well, with the Preservation Alliance and the Windsor Hotel, when that organization was formed, their main goal was just to find someone to come along, take the building off their hands and fix it for them. So, that's what a lot of the process was until we had a good grant opportunity and jumped in in the early 20 teens here. So, and then at that point, we put over a million dollars with stabilization, new roof, lifting the building six inches, inches, just a lot of that stuff. And then I stepped away for about five years and, you know, came back and had to pick up pieces, basically. So, there was that little, little spot where there wasn't a lot done, but back on the board, given it a push again. But, of course, and we had a recent delay with our bricks on the back wall, but we're having that addressed. Our engineer was out in April, so now we're taking the steps to get our bricks back in the wall where they belong. But, for the most part, we should start seeing more stuff on the ground floor. So, Student Council did help fix up two of the storerooms that we can use for events and we used one of them for we had an afternoon TV. And that's something we'd like to see more and more at the Windsor is, you know, like the Brown Palace Hotel in Denver is known for their afternoon TVs. So, that's something we want to be known for. It went over really well. So, once we get open and up running again to the season again, you know, we'll be offering those afternoon TVs. We offer tours every Saturday. And then the other storeroom where our shoe store was, Student Council helped fix that up and we had a Christmas event three weekends in the round, so that went over really well.
So, how do you see the committee, I mean, the structure of the committee and would there be any liaisons between the Preservation Alliance and this committee?
Yes, so, I would say there need to probably one to two of the current board members on the committee, just so that everything is stacked together.
So, but one project, so if, because like you said, the Windsor sounds like a much larger project. So, they're not tied specifically, so if one's not successful, the other's not successful or are they basically separate projects so that the State Theater seems more doable?
Yeah, they are separate projects, but together, they roll out really well together. And if something gets going with the State Theater faster, something can go in with the Windsor faster.
So, with your proposal, have you, I mean, you had your funding outline here, but have you visited with any foundations or with anybody in the community who would give lead gifts or?
Yeah, I haven't started though, just because I wanted to see where the proposal went. But, we would do, you know, I'll start with local grants. Of course, I was the executive director of the Friends of the Leadership Zoo for three years, so I'm, you know, I know who to go to, I know what grants to do, but you know, I capped off the Cap Canyon exhibit. That was over a million dollars on its own. And then after that, we had a series of smaller exhibits and large donors for that. But, you know, for example, one thing that could be set up is students set up a capital campaign, maybe it's for the facade and your campaign is light up the state again. And approaching someone who you know, "Hey, this is a good source for this," would they write a check that takes care of the entire removal of the facade restoration of the current one and then, you know, random with their name. So, not the theater itself, just the credit for the restoration.
And your request from the city is the sprinkler and then the first year of utilities and then to acquire the property, a dollar per year lease with eventual ownership?
Yes, so, when I worked at the Friends of the Leadership Zoo, we leased a safari shop for a dollar per year, just because of the community impact that a safari shop has for the city. So, I thought we'd be looking at a similar situation.
So, with the liability not having the city, so the city, so it's like with the other proposals, it's a standalone business for this. So, is the liability going to be on the school when the students are working there or will it be on the Preservation Alliance or how are you going to cover those kind of issues like with, like staffing, especially tied to the school?
I think we'd have to have further discussions with the city if the proposal goes through to see exactly how that, yeah. And for the most part, I mean, our goals, our number one goal, when you take students off campus is their safety. So, like when I take them out to Windsor, that's why it's like, "Okay, guys, we're painting and usually they're not on ladders either."
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any thoughts on what the commission would like to do considering we don't have anybody here from the Tumbleweed?
I wouldn't be interested. I don't know if they'd be willing to speak from Downtown Vision. I mean, I know that this is a downtown amenity, I'm curious and I didn't, I was going to reach out to them and I didn't get a chance to. So, if that, if they feel like it's too early to speak, I mean, we can...
Well, that's kind of...
Well, as far as like, as what kind of like, both of them are theater or both of them are those, are there something that we're needing downtown or that draw the attraction? And again, if you're not prepared to speak, I totally understand.
Do you want us to come up?
If you'd like to.
Can I give a stand from here?
If you're going to speak, please come up.
I know, sorry.
I think on behalf of Downtown Vision, I mean, we're not going to speak on any particular proposal, but we just really hope that whatever one is picked is that movement hers. Like, we don't want to see somebody take over the State Theater and watch it sit and hope that something to come to play. We just want that, we want a proposal that is going to move forward. I do agree that what has been said, that I think we've got several things kind of brewing and I think that it's possible that if the State Theater maybe would be the kickoff one, that we would start to see some of those vacant buildings get built. And I'm really hoping and we see the State Theater with entertainment options. I think that is something that is being asked by the community and is needed downtown. But, as far as what I'm concerned, I just, I don't want to see the building be just handed off like, "Oh, it's off our hands." I want it to be like, "Let's, let's get something going, let's see something happening and something really positive for downtown."
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know, I think that, I know from my perspective, that is certainly something that is a concern as far as, you know, with the proposals and stuff, especially considering that, you know, there's been two and three times, having it come back and not, not want to have it just sit there either, but...
I agree. I think, I mean, I think that's a good point, that the city has to be involved with this. Otherwise, I mean, I don't think it's going to be successful. So, what that looks like.
So, Devin Fort is here to talk about Tumbleweed.
Oh, great.
And so, we are very grateful that you're here. Thanks for taking the time. If you'd like to, what we've done, we've heard the other two proposals, yours is the third one to hear, but if you'd like to just come up to the microphone and state your name and talk a little bit about the proposal and then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. I'm Devin Fort. Here on behalf of the Tumbleweed Festival. Sorry, I just got late, no, this is a meeting. Made it as soon as I could. Our, our thought with the proposal is to provide a space for concerts, things of that nature, as well as anything else. But, a big space like that could be used for, which would be meetings and wedding receptions or weddings and things like that. So, basically, even the building has its original purpose for live performances, for the arts. And we thought it was important to have something in the front that's full-time, open full-time as for a piece of Garden City to the downtown piece to just be always operated. But, it would be a shame for us to take that space and only use it every couple months or every couple times a month or something like that. So, we're trying to get it open full-time so we can have bands and other artists come through there during the week and hopefully as often as possible catching shows from, between Colorado and Wichita and Hayes and Amarillo. There's a lot of, a lot of entertainment we can capture here for the Garden City. So, basically, we would remodel the front half into a bar and restaurant that could house maybe some smaller shows and then reserve the back half for larger shows as well as for, you know, rental type purposes. Any questions?
Just one, I know that one of the other proposals said that they would be willing to work with the other entities that applied depending, you know, depending on what that looks like. Is that something that Tumbleweed would consider partnering with?
Sure, it'd be level space, we could use it for other things. I didn't hear the other presentation. If it lines up, it'd be fine with us.
And I know that this, the other ones had budgets. Do you have a preliminary budget or that you thought about or that you had estimates of what?
I don't have estimates pulled together. I'm a contractor. I was surprised to have good shape of buildings and of course, it's going to need a lot of things, but the major things are taken care of and it's held together quite well. It's just mostly cosmetic work.
So, your timeline is 18 months. That's kind of an aggressive timeline. Can you kind of talk a little bit about how you think that might be a realistic timeline or too little, too much?
It possibly could be too little because a lot of the funding that we would apply for is past and won't be available until next year. However, we feel like we could get started and get operational in that amount of time. It takes additional time to get the full renovation done. So, probably 24 months.
Sure. And you list sort of these programs, looking at tax credits, community development block grants, investment. Have you visited with some of these foundations or with others in the community about helping with the funding?
I've reached out to some of those foundations. I need to get in touch with the rest of them to help us with organizing those applications.
And I'm guessing the Tumbleweed would act as the fiscal sponsor in these grant applications?
Yeah.
Okay. So, does anybody from the Tumbleweed Committee or anyone that you've visited with have experience with running capital campaigns?
I have some experience with capital campaigns. Cecilia Deppless does some of that, I think. Possibly we would have to reach for outside of on that, I don't know. But, any, what funding sources we have, there is possibly some money we could put towards having a professional with that. We do have some people with experience on the board, but we'll take that.
Okay. So, I just had a question about the, on the marquee. Can you help me understand what laser effects? I mean, I understand what the LED chasing lights is, but I'm thinking, I hear laser effects and I just think, okay.
Back to the future.
Yes, I mean, so what?
It depends on maybe amusement park or something where they will do art, like on a canyon wall or something, they'll use lasers to depict a picture or send a message or whatever. It just moves so fast.
Okay.
You know, it's just interesting little things that you can do with the design to make it more interesting, so I think it more of a screen.
Okay, gotcha. So, it sounds like it'll be a pretty flexible space. Would you, so for rentals and stuff, you would, would you provide equipment or would it just be totally flexible enough to whoever rents it out?
Our thought would be that we would purchase a variety of different setups as far as furnishings for it, so it could be utilized for, you know, longer tables for a meeting, lunch, cocktail tables or round tables, just depending on the setup. We'd try to put storage for that under the stage as a basement or possibly under the basement up front.
And your request from the city is to acquire the property and you're asking for a waiver of permit fees. So, when you say acquire the property, are you just wanting the city to give you the property? You wanting to buy it for a minimal, but for a minimal cost? I mean, so what, what is your vision for that?
Our vision would be that the city would give it to us for that, but for that purpose, the city's use in that way.
Sure, okay.
If we need to come up with something, we could possibly do that.
Any other questions? No. All right, thank you for your time. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I know, so moving forward, I know one of my apprehensions, I think, in trying to figure out what to do is, I think in all of these, I just didn't, I don't feel like I have a good idea of the business plan to make any of them successful. I know that definitely wanting, wanting any of these, you know, that we would, you know, grant it to, you want it to be successful and you want to do what you can. But, I think from a business plan perspective or even from a fundraising perspective, it's just kind of a, "Well, here's our plan and we hope it works." And so, I would, I guess I would like just a little bit more information about what that looks like. I know you've talked about it, but, and that's just from my perspective. I don't know the other commissioners, where you all are on, wanting to make a decision today or if you'd like more information or if you feel comfortable, I mean...
So, some of the things that's pertinent, maybe that we didn't even know at the beginning of this whole process. One is Hunden is doing a study of facilities. So, we don't really know what that's going to come out, that the county is heading that up and that should be coming out.
Fairly, I mean...
Fairly soon. So, maybe they have a very direct in that, because I mean, they are going through the facilities that we have, what should we be doing with them, where it's the best use of those. So, there might be one that they say, "Hey, we..." Because they toured through the State Theater. They might say, "Hey, the theater is exactly what you need here or concert venues is echo. We don't, I don't know what that's going to say." Some would be odd to make a decision on a direction without knowing what that says. Secondly, we're going to have a new director for Parks and Rec. And this right now is a city building. If there is a person who hires that is, that's their passion is these kind of performances as their way to interact with the community. We know, I mean, it seemed like Aaron's passion was the sports and baseball and stuff like that. So, I really saw the work in there. If the person that we're going to hire is in this realm, it seems like it'd be kind of unfortunate to offload a building right before. I mean, something that, like Mark said, is something that we can possibly get done through one way or the other. So, it would be, it would be hard for me to decide one way or the other at this time now, just because I don't know what... just because I don't know what would be the best for the city. I do know from what I've talked to that everybody wants something to happen.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's clear. I don't know how much the community is focused on this one thing happening. I've heard plays need to be happening there. I've heard it needs to be a venue. I mean, I've heard across the board, but I know everybody wants it to be done. The other thing that I'm seeing is, is for the most part, at least two-thirds, the city is going to be the one with the building and then leasing it back. And if we're talking about the major funding sources for these being grants and working with our legislators or working with state agencies or local fundraising, I don't know that any one of these three organizations can fundraise better than we could as the city or as us being the backing to it and maybe have a Friends of the State Theater kind of organization that's kind of organizing all that. But a grant that comes into an organization like this or a grant that comes to us, it's all still the same money that's in the community going to the thing, going to the project. I think possibly there might be some benefits if the city is going to be the one that ends up with the building and leasing it out or however that happens. If we're the acting as that fiscal agent to kind of give a little bit more oomph to those applications. So that's our end.
Well, I'd say, yeah, I really, there's aspects of each of the proposals I really like. I really appreciate that it's entertainment-based and also the understanding, the need for events. And I guess, you know, owning the building and if money wasn't the object and what we, you know, if we created something that was really unique and something that was really sustainable. I mean, I guess I'm more interested in doing something like that. I do like the preservation or the restoration of the building. I had no idea it looked like that, which is really neat. I thought that was a cool. I thought that was part, one of the proposals, you know, when they talked about the restoration, I think that's really unique and I guess I appreciate that. All of them have really good aspects. I'm with you as far as being totally fleshed out to make a decision without some of these additional things happening. And I agree. I think it's, the city's got to stand behind and it's really with our, with the ability of the city to help also with grants and those kind of things. And also I think that it looks more favorable when you have the city government behind something, especially that's as big a project as this. It's not a, it's not a $50,000 or $100,000. I mean, we're talking millions of dollars and that's hard for any organization to have to fundraise and do, so.
Mr. Cessna or Ortiz, any thoughts that you have?
If you want to go first.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I mean, I appreciate the efforts that were put into this. So that, I mean, this was our goal, was to get it out there and figure out what we can do for the community, how we can engage, you know, some investors to come into the city and really revive downtown. That's what, that's what the goals of the commission were too, to kind of, you know, make it vibrant again on Main Street. So finding the correct fit, I think we're kind of on, well, I'm kind of seeing some holes and gaps that maybe need to be, get filled in so that we can better understand how this is going to come together and really, really thrive downtown. So for me, I'm in the same boat with like, there's just some information that may lack a little bit on each one of the proposals. Good proposals. I mean, I don't, I'm not downgrading anybody or anything. Just, just the fact that I want to be sure. I think the rest of the committee wants to be sure of how these components will work. And if, and if every one, all three entities can work together, that'd be awesome too. But with, with the help from the city, this kind of opens a floodgate for anybody to come in and just ask for that funding elsewhere. So where do we stop? So we got issues kind of like daycare down the line, you know, fire, police, some of the other bigger issues that the city funds already. There's, there's some, some really big items that we maybe need to just kind of foresee in the future what to do with this. Like I said, this just opens up some gates on where do we stop with funding? And how do, you know, how much do we give? How much do we don't give? That thing like that. So that's, that's really kind of where I'm sitting, so.
Well, I kind of agree with the mayor. You know, the, it was, there were good proposals, but there wasn't really a fleshed out business plan on, on the direct, I mean, there was direction, but I just needed more information on how you get to funding. I know you were talking grants and everything, but again, like the other commissioners, there's some gaps there that I think need to be filled in that would give me a better understanding and idea to make a decision on this at this time.
Yeah. And I think that Commissioner Dick makes a really good point about hiring a new recreation director. I mean, I know that that's kind of a longer process and could take a while in order to do that. But I also, I mean, thinking about it from a city budget perspective and, you know, what that looks like. I know right now we're in our budgeting process, but it does kind of make me a little nervous thinking about that much of a debt to take on and where that would come from in the budget. And it might be years before we could even make that happen. And so that part makes me just a little bit nervous, especially, like I said, with the budgeting season, but then with some of the other budget constraints that we've had this past few years. I don't know. I know I don't feel comfortable making a decision today, but I don't know. I don't, if you all want to make a motion, we could do that. But honestly, I think I would like to ask Danielle if it would be possible to ask from the other, from the three proposals at least, putting together a more robust business plan that would include a little bit more about financing. And for the request, especially if you've got a large request, well, all of you have something that you want to request from the city, but especially if you could be a little bit more specific about what that looks like and even do some research about how a city would fund that. And I think even visiting with Danielle or even with our finance director, I think that would be something that I would recommend that you do.
Well, I would encourage each of them also to really work with downtown vision. I mean, I really appreciate, I hopefully didn't put you on the spot, but I really appreciate, I think that they really have the heartbeat of downtown too. And I think, you know, making sure that we're really connecting, you know, the dots on those kind of things are really important, so.
And that Hunden study too will be important to see on the facility side of things, just exactly what the State Theater could be used for. And it actually might even help with one, with the proposal that Mr. Pamplin submitted about. And I know that they're not specifically looking at it from, you know, a theater group like the Colorado consultants are, but I mean, it would at least kind of give some ideas of what it could be. And I think that, that could definitely help, so. I do also appreciate your time and coming and presenting your proposals and putting these together because I know that the State Theater is one of the commission's goals, you know, doing something with that this year. And so the fact that you guys took the time, and I know for some of you, you've been thinking about this for years. And I also want to thank you for taking time to do that. And it's not a, no, it's kind of a, we'd like to see a little, you know, we appreciate your proposals, but we just want to see a little bit more information just because we want to be sure that this time it works, so.
Well, the other thing that I would be interested in seeing is how much are each of these, can they, can they work together realistically? Like, can you do a concert venue in a place that's also a theater? I mean, you say, yeah, I will work with you, work with you, but what does that actually look like? Because I'm thinking like seating, like, there's a difference in how the seating is going to be laid out. What's mutually exclusive and what is not mutually exclusive for these sorts of projects? Because it can't be everything to everybody. There's going to have to be compromises. Or do you just say the compromise is this is, this was meant for this or we think it should be this one specific use and we want a different use to have to find a different location? And I don't know what that, I mean, I'm not an expert in any of this. So I don't know when we're saying, yeah, you guys could do it and you two work together to figure out the feeling, what is, what is a compromise? Does it actually work? Like for reals, does it, does it work?
That would be another good thing to address too, so.
I appreciate the direction and the discussion. And we'll follow up with each of the applicants, have some of those conversations and bring back something to you at a future meeting once we kind of get some of those things solidified. I think you made a great point about the Hunden report and getting some of that stuff back. So it may be a little bit of time, but we'll take a look at all of those things and get something back.
All right. I know it's not the answer the three of you wanted, but at the same time, it does help us make a better, more informed decision, so. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going to take a little temperature check of the commission. It's 2:40. Would you like to take a short break before we make the phone call or take up the phone call? Take a short break between that and the budget?
All right. Commissioner Ortiz did have to leave the meeting and he won't be coming back. So I think we're good to go on for that part of it.
Yeah.
This will be item 11A and I need to dial in. City's special counsel on this matter.
This is Andrew.
Andrew, this is Matt Allen. I'm in a public meeting at the City of Garden City. The commission's reached your agenda item and I'm getting ready to introduce the item. And then I'll, and then you'll be able to chime in when, when you're called on. You should be able to hear, but if you can't, I'll, I guess, speak up and let me know.
Okay. Thank you. And can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great. Item 11A. Wait, hold on. Sorry. Item 11A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the selection of an electric service provider for the recently annexed property in ordinance number 2942-2022. Jennifer?
Do you want me to go there? Is that easier?
There's fine.
Okay. So in regards to this item, the governing body voted to annex a property that we, that we call Lucky Four Investments LLC. And this was under ordinance 2942-2022. This was done on November 15th of 2022 and became effective on November 22nd of 2022. The property is located east of Jenny Barker Road on North US Highway 156 in Garden City, Kansas. You all previously heard during your March 21st, 2023 public meeting, evidence regarding which entity should be the retail electric service provider for the annexed property based on the factors set forth in KSA 66-1176A2. Both Mike Muirhead with the City of Garden City Public Utilities Department and James McVay for Wheatland Electric presented their analysis of the 11 factors to be considered regarding the selection of an electric service provider for the newly annexed property. There are no electrical facilities on the property and no customers currently being served. The next step in selecting an electric service provider, which you are here for today, is for Leo, Leo counsel to discuss the attached memo and options available to the governing body. For the City of Garden City, both city attorney, myself and Andrew Schulte with Polsonelli, he's special electric utility counsel, and he will be going through the memo with you and analyzing the 11 factors as they were presented during that meeting.
Andrew, it's now turn to you to go through the memo with the special factors.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, as Jennifer said, this is Andrew Schulte with Polsonelli. I'm acting as a special electric utility counsel today. There is a memo that was provided to the governing body that includes recommended findings of fact as well as recommended conclusions. The governing body has discretion to weigh the 11 factors that were referenced by Jennifer. The governing body has to consider all 11 factors, but the governing body does have discretion to weigh those factors and make the ultimate selection as long as the discretion is exercised reasonably and it is based upon evidence. And the evidence in this case was presented at the March 21st, 2023 public meetings as also referenced by Jennifer. So the option before the governing body today is to adopt the recommended findings of fact and the, and the recommended conclusions as set forth in the memo. The governing body may also elect to modify those recommended findings of fact and conclusions. Or the, the commission could ask for additional, an additional memo with different recommended findings of fact and recommended conclusions. The, the, ultimately, the governing body does need to make a decision. The 180-day statutory timeframe does expire on May 21st. So that's next week. The, the 100, what happens after 180 days, according to the statute, is that the, there will be, the, the rights of the been-serving utility shall terminate. And, and so the, the default would be that the city begins to serve that property. As Jennifer noted, there are no existing customers on the property. So there are, there is no immediate service needs. And so, you know, that, that decision could be changed later. But after, you know, next week, after 180-day period, the rights of the, the, of Wheatlands, which is the currently certificated utility in that area, will terminate. So it's best to make a decision before that 180-day period concludes. So the, the recommend, the recommended findings of fact are quite detailed and they address each of the 11 factors that are required to be considered. And I won't go through the findings of fact in detail because they are quite lengthy. However, the, the subject matter that it covers are the 11 factors, which are the public convenience and necessity, the rates of various suppliers, the desires of the customer or customers to be served, the economic impact on the suppliers, the economic impact on the customers of the suppliers, the supplier's operational ability to serve the annexed area, avoiding the wasteful duplication of facilities, avoiding unnecessary encumbrance on the landscape, preventing the waste of materials and natural resources, proposals from any retail electric supplier holding a certificate in the annexed area, and whether the selection is in the public interest as it relates to all of the factors considered by the city. I will now go to the conclusions and which summarize the, our proposed conclusions for each of those factors. The conclusion on the public convenience and necessity, the proposed conclusion, is while both Wheatland and the city utility department are qualified to provide retail electric service, the public convenience and necessity will be served by having a consistent retail electric supplier throughout the city limits. Such consistency will facilitate emergency response, safety and customer service. With regard to rates, while the rates for customers in the annexed property will be higher in the near term with the city utility department service, adding prospective customers to the annexed property will decrease the cost of service for city utility department service in the long term. The city utility department also offers more predictability with its rates because it does not utilize a, a cost adjustment which the Wheatland rates do utilize. The statutory service charge, which is an 8.5% charge for annexed territory, and that 8.5% is charged for 10 years after the effective date of the annexation. So that clock is already ticking, or I'm sorry, I think it's 100, it's 10 years from the date that the service rights of an existing service provider are terminated. So that has not yet happened yet. That will happen when the city makes its selection or after 180 days. That begins a 10-year period. That begins a 10-year period where an 8.5% statutory service charge applies. That will expire after 10 years. Whereas the franchise fee, which would be charged to an outside retail electric supplier that is not the city, so in this case, it would be Wheatland, if Wheatland were selected to serve the annexed property, they would be charged a 5% franchise fee, which would continue for the duration of the franchise. That's an important distinction, is that the statutory service charge expires after 10 years, but the franchise fee would continue for the duration of the franchise. The franchise fee, the standard franchise fee for the city is 5%. It is likely that the future customers in the annexed territory would not pay the statutory service charge, that 8.5%, they would likely not pay that for an entire 10 years because it will take time to develop the annexed property. So by, by the time there are customers using the load on that property, some of that 10 years will have expired. Regarding C, the desires of the customers, the owners of the annexed property requested that the annex, requested the annexation by the city with the understanding that they would receive all city services, including electric service. There is no substantial evidence of the preference of prospective customers in the annexed property because such preference would depend on numerous known and unknown factors in the future. It, it's, it's not possible to know exactly what those future customers may value. Of course, rates is one of those issues, but there are other issues as well. Regarding the economic impact on suppliers, the city utility department will benefit from the revenue attributable to the annexed property if the utility department is selected, and Wheatland will benefit from the 8.5% payment over the next 10 years. With regard to the economic impact on customers, on the customers of the suppliers, the city utility department's provision of electric service to the annexed property will eventually lead to lower costs per customers for city residences and businesses once the initial capital cost for that service are paid. Wheatland's customers will benefit from the 8.5% payment over the next 10 years. While both suppliers, and this is with regard to their, the supplier's operational ability, while both suppliers claim to be able to serve the annexed property, the city utility department recently acquired the Morris Substation, which is adjacent to the annexed property, and the city utility department can extend service with no meaningful difference from Wheatland's ability to extend service. With regard to duplication of facilities, there is not expected to be any significant duplication of facilities as a result of the city utility department serving the property. With regard to encumbrance of the landscape, there is also not expected to be any significant encumbrance of the landscape as a result of the city utility department serving the property. There is also not expected to be any significant waste of materials and natural resources as a result of the city utility department serving the property. With regard to the need to consider proposals from the retail electric supplier with a current certificate, Wheatland's written materials and oral presentation have been thoroughly considered, and those are part of the findings of fact that are included in the memo. And finally, with regard to the overall public interest, continuity of service by the city utility department within the city limits is expected to create a safer environment in the event of storm damage or physical damage to facilities. Police and fire officials will know that all facilities within the city limits are served by the city utility department, which may avoid confusion or unnecessary delays in mitigating the dangerous conditions on restoring power. So those are the proposed findings, which lead to the ultimate conclusion that the governing body select, would select the city utility department to serve in the annexed territory, and Wheatland will be compensated for the termination of its retail service rights according to state law. I will pause there and respond to any questions.
So I just had a question. So the compensation that's listed in here was around $2,800. Is that what they'd be compensated if they're not chosen, or is that?
Which compensation are you referring to?
Not the, not the 8.5%. There was a retirement of some, some sprinkler and then something else.
So the compensation to Wheatland would be 8.5% of the gross revenues of the total retail electric sales attributable to new customers in the annexed area. And there are also some, there's a minimal amount of existing facilities in the territory, even though there's no customers. There are, there's some limited existing facilities from Wheatland.
Yeah, it's right above age, avoiding that necessary recumbent.
Right.
Yep, sorry.
Yes, that's the 2,340. My understanding is that's for some, an existing sprinkler drive service line. And, and so that, Wheatland would be compensated for that. In the big picture, that's not a material amount of money. The, the more material amount would be the 8.5% of all gross revenues for 10 years.
Which currently is, there is, or there are no gross revenues. Is that correct? And so?
That's right. The service line is, is in the territory, but it's not serving load within the territory.
Okay.
Any other questions? No. Yeah, we don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Andrew.
I do want to add one thing. I think if the commission votes to approve the recommended findings of fact and the recommended conclusions, I would ask that you correct one error at the top of page three. It states there that although there is no existing or planned load on the annexed properties, there was some evidence within Wheatland memorandum that indicated that the property, that there's a subdivision that is expected to be, to go in on the annexed properties at some point. So I think it would be more accurate to just state that there are no existing, that there's no existing load on the annexed properties and strike the plan because there may in fact be planned load. So I would, I would ask if you adopt the recommended findings of fact and the recommended conclusions, that you do so with that correction.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that. So at this time, you can, the governing body has two alternatives here that considering what was just presented, you can decide to designate the city electric department as the retail electric provider for the annexed property, or you may designate another retail electric provider for the annexed property. At this point in time, there's no fiscal note that actually ties to this because nothing's been done with the property, so there are no customers. The fiscal note would be updated or would change once that was developed.
So the motion, we have to put in the motion of findings of fact and conclusion on determining, along with the correction, of no existing load on existing property to designate the city electric department as the retail electric provider for the annexed property?
Yes. That was good.
That was the motion, then?
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
If that was the correct.
That wasn't correct.
I know we have to put all that verbiage in there somehow, so I was just making sure that's.
Your motion was correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like a short, sort of budget.
How long of a break would you like?
Just a couple.
Okay. Would, I'd like to take a five-minute break before we get into the, the budget discussion, and so we will go on break, say, well, it's 2:59, so until 3:05.
Probably mostly my kids running around. We don't have any. Uh-uh, we don't have any. Our neighbors have some. Our neighbors have two. We have too many kids out there. You have to pick, like, once you have four, then you have to have one.
Okay, it is 3:05, and so we will go ahead and continue. You have your microphone?
Mayor, commissioners, I'm Emily Burns, the Assistant Finance Director, and today we are going to review the enterprise funds, beginning with electric revenue. Collections has increased due to the rate increase implemented on January 1st of 2023. So you'll notice a change in that.
You might have to put your microphone a little bit closer.
Here, pull, pull the base.
There you go.
Next is electric additions. There's a couple line items that have increased. The first one you'll notice is material traffic lights that increased 525,000 in 2023 for the revised budget. That is for the signal at Spruce and Fleming. Materials, empirical foods is 125 increase in the 2023 revised, and that is the remaining expected cost for the project. Material empirical rail spur, that represents the full cost of the current project scope. If changes, if change orders increase this amount, empirical will prepay the city the value of the change order, and reimbursement from KDOT are then passed on to empirical. New equipment, other increase of 275 in 2024, and that is to replace a Digger Derrick unit. And then the transformers, the increased cost is, in 2024, is due to an increased cost in the transformers themselves, and there is also a timing issue due to long lead times for those. Up next in electric production is wholesale electric. 2023 was adjusted for the, to account for the cost increase we experienced in 2022. We are on pace with the current budget, and 2024 is budgeted with a 7% increase. The state, state loan, loan amount increase in 2023 based on current average for interest rates, and we might see a slight increase in 2024, though not much of a jump in 2023. Everything in production is pretty consistent. 2023 revised, 2024 requested, no major adjustments there. Moving on to electric commercial, we did increase the insurance, the property insurance. That is just due to the increase we saw this year with our renewal, so we'll just increase that to accommodate for the changes there. No other major changes in electric commercial. Moving on to electric sundry, the transfer other fund, you'll notice that there is 1 million in there, and that is a placeholder for the transfers to repay the budgets, which paid the legal settlement in 2022 and 2023. Then we will evaluate the electric utility cash, cash position near the end of the year to determine the amount to be transferred. Priority will be to repay solid waste and water utility using those funds. Transfer JEC reserve, the second line description should actually read transfer utility franchises, so we'll make an adjustment there. And the amount in 2023 is based on 5% of 2022 final revenues. Electric debt services, capital lease payment, that will be the final payment, or the final payment for this debt will be in 2025, so we will see that decline in years to come. Electric debt services, capital lease payment, that will be the final payment, or the final payment for this debt will be in 2025, so we will see that decline in years to come. The electric cash position, the current budget shows cash position decreasing over two years, even with increased revenues. This is in part to the timing of the payments received from empirical upfront for the rail spur project, which are now being paid out. Additionally, the budget, the budgeted 1 million per year as repaid to other funds, we won't expect to see the cash position of the electric utility increase as much as it could until those repayments are complete. Moving on to electric capital revenue. We continue to transfer the 750 per year to the revenue, even while repaying other funds for the settlement. Once other funds have been repaid, the transfer to the reserve will be increased to achieve the estimated reserve goals identified in the cost service study. Are there any questions or comments on electric? Okay, moving on. Utility security deposits, everything is consistent there, no major changes in the 2023 revised and 2024 requested. So we will move on to water revenue. You'll notice the first significant change is going to be in collections, water. Collections were high in 2022 due to the excessively dry year. Hopefully with more rain, we will see, maybe this year, it will result in lower revenues, so we did adjust for that. The reimburse developer line item values in 2023 and 2024 represent the true up amounts we expect to receive from empirical upon completion of the water and wastewater treatment plant improvements. Next is, next major change is the transfer electric utility, and that is also a placeholder for the reimbursement from electric for the legal settlement payment.
How much does that, how much is the reimbursement to the water department total?
Oh, that is a good question.
And you can.
And I will, yeah, I'll have to make a note of that, and I will follow up with you on it. Okay, next major change is going to be in the water additions, material mains. The increased 2023 revised budget is to account for the historical figures being higher than the current budget, so that just kind of offsets what the 2022 actuals were. Next is going to be the equipment replacement for the wastewater treatment plant, and we increased that to 800,000 in 2024 for major equipment identified as needing to be replaced, which that includes clarifier, UV distribution, and polymer system upgrades. So that, you'll notice, is a significant increase over 2023. Next, in water production, no significant changes until you notice the empirical foods material. And that is 110,000 budgeted in 2024. That's the remaining cost for the, cost for water for the project for empirical. Maintenance water tower, you will notice that it is a new GL, it has no prior activity. We created that during the 2023 revised session. It is to identify the maintenance costs for the water tower, so that way we can separate it out. It's just shifting the funds around from the line item they were previously in. Water distribution, no major changes until you get to the repair materials. This is used for water main breaks and similar repairs. As you know, lately we have had several pretty major water breaks, so we did increase that significantly in the 2023 revised and 2024 requested. And then new equipment other for 2024, that amount has been increased to 130,000 for a new service truck with a mobile crane that was requested. Water commercial, slight increase in the insurance property and vehicle line item, that is to accommodate the increase in service, or increase in fees for 2023 revised and 2024. Then moving on to the rest of water commercial, all the way through water debt services, no major changes there. Everything is pretty consistent to prior years' requests and activities. Up next, wastewater sewer maintenance, for the most part salaries, everything consistent with prior years' increases. You will notice there is $2.6 million request in the 2023 revised material empirical foods, and those are the anticipated remaining costs of the project. The majority of the amount has been prepaid or will be reimbursed from empirical, so that's consistent with some of the other increases you've seen throughout. Wastewater sewage plant, everything is consistent there as far as increases, nothing significant to note in those. We did have, let's see, in solid waste, did anybody have any questions on sewage or wastewater before we move on?
No.
Let me know if I'm moving through these too quickly. So, let's see here, we are on solid waste revenue. Did I move too fast?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Everybody on, we're on solid waste, okay. Transfer electric utility, this is the placeholder for the amount being prepaid for electric for the settlement. Solid waste operations. Sorry, my pages got out of order. Solid waste, new equipment vehicle, 2023 total of 878,000 increase in the revised. That is for the side load truck lease, which is 67,000, the rear load truck lease, which comes to 56,000 a year, skid steer at 8,000, a new poly cart truck for 263, and two new side load trucks at 484. In 2024, a total increase of 351, and that includes the side load truck lease payment, rear load truck lease, skid steer, and a new hook lift fork truck, hook lift truck with grapple body or side load truck for 220. Solid waste cash position, as budgeted, the cash position continues to decrease. This is due in main part to the settlement costs and the increase in new equipment costs being experienced. We plan to conduct a cost of service study for the solid waste service in the near future and develop plans for proper fund balance levels and future rate changes. Did anybody have any questions on any of water, sewage, solid waste? Okay.
Just a quick question. I noticed you broke out, it's started solid waste HHW, we said the household.
Oh, yes.
Household waste?
You breaking that out to the Secretary of Department?
We are.
Just making sure.
Yes. So on that one, the household hazardous waste and solid waste operation, yes, we broke that out into two divisions, so that way we could show a separation of the funds.
Okay.
Okay, so. Up next, we have airport. And salary positions, you will notice there's a change in those due to the added of the, for the addition of the full security plan. We currently have the new positions proposed for that included in the 2024 requested. And there, I think, and I know Rochelle isn't here today, but I believe they are in the process.
Okay. Okay, did you want to speak on the salaries? I know you kind of went over all that with Jared.
Yeah, yeah, so like at least the city airport's going from partial security plan to a full security plan based on the increased size of the aircraft that is serving the airport. And so part of that is onboarding a whole new security team. So currently, we did hire a Catholic counselor from a former of the city, and she's now out of the airport. And so her and her team are starting to develop, and we're starting to work towards some of those TSA regulations on going to a full security plan, and with the terminal getting ready to open on the first phase and continue on the second phase. It's kind of like a 18-month plan, so we do have some staffing onsite right now and continue to grow that staff so we can meet all those federal regulations.
Well, the TSA, will that staff be full-time, Rochelle?
So there's a combination. So more than likely, we'll have a security staff out there about 20 hours a day. TSA, we can propose to have some time that is downtime that we won't have to cover that. And that security staff won't take any law enforcement action or anything like that. We'll still rely on the government's police department, the county sheriff, and, again, side control if we do go into a law enforcement situation. They're basically there to secure the scene as best as possible, access control, controlled cameras, everything like that, the doors, everything, and ensure everybody's ID and badge properly with the federal background checks that will be required.
Okay, I'll ask just because I'm wondering. I know this isn't going to happen soon, but in the future, if you were to either get another airline or additional flight, what would be the extra staffing requirements? Would it just be longer hours with the current staff that we would already have, or would we be tied to needing to get more staff for the airport?
So we, as far as the city staff.
Yeah, city staff.
We probably wouldn't have to staff any more than what we currently do. Right now, we are, have seven positions on our operations maintenance staff, so we haven't filled all those staff because it's not required yet. But we still have the availability to go seven days a week with them. So they're more responsible for the airfield and the infrastructure, it's the buildings, so we would like to have somebody on staff that we continue to grow our air service for that. That's currently built into our budget, but we're just not utilizing that at this point. Security staff that we have proposed would be able to cover that, so any additional flights or anything would just more than likely fill two spots that have already been approved. So it'd just be the salary funding actually being utilized for those positions.
Thank you. And up next, the next notable change is going to be in the airport improvement line item. Amounts in 2023 revised and 2024 requested reflect the airport improvement projects, and those are just associated with the terminal. And I don't know if anybody has any additional questions for Rochelle on that one, but you'll notice in 2023 it increased to 400,000 and then went to 300,000 in 2024. New equipment other, the 2023 budget consists of, you'll see that it's 200,000. It consists of maintenance pickup, enclosed mower, snow broom for side box and the parking lot, and a broom attachment that was requested during the initial budget process in March. In 2024, the increase, it consists of a flatbed truck with welder and generator and an enclosed hustler mower. Did anybody have any follow-up questions for airport? If not, we will move on to golf. And you will notice there are not any significant increases in the revenue or expenditures for the 2023 revised and 2024 requested. Currently, they're conducting a review of the current golf rates for membership and green fees. I don't know, did you guys want to discuss any of that, or?
If anybody has a, okay. So that, the rates have been, from, it's my understanding, the rates have been relatively the same for quite some time, so they're just looking at adjusting that. Most of the budget is fairly consistent, no major changes, you won't notice any major requests. We did, in the transfer golf course building and grounds, and that's going to be, towards the back, second to last page of the golf budget. Budget of 30,000 in 2023 and 2024 to assist with ongoing golf course improvement projects, and we'll need to incorporate additional funds in 2024 for the large phase of the projects. So we did some adjustments there. Next, on golf course improvement, we plan to utilize approximately 40,000 in 2023 for this year's phase of the improvement project. In 2024, we will use approximately 50,000 from this fund for the large phase of the project. We also recently were awarded 40,000 from the attraction development grant from the state, which will go towards the large phase costs. And we still need to identify approximately 110,000 for the 2024 phase of the project. A plan for this adjustment will be presented in the future. Possibilities include just geo bond or possibly from the .15 sales tax. Finally, is the recreation revenue. And you will notice that this, these budget worksheets look a little different because of the transfer of the balance to the general fund. So you'll see the 2023 budget is mostly blank for, or on the spreadsheets. The revenue, or the, sorry, the reserve will continue to be built up to offset the potential occurrence for a drop in revenues from recreation services. Transfer to the general fund, that line item, let's see, that is going to be, it's a bunch of blank pages, or it looks that way. That'll be the last page. 50,000 is transferred from the general fund each year to continue to build the reserve, transfer special parks and rec. This 25,000 a year is repaying the cost of the new fleet of golf carts that were purchased. And lastly, the new equipment other, this includes a new vehicle for recreation at 27,000 and a carpet installation at Sixth Street at approximately 23,000. Does anybody have any questions on recreation at this point? If not, the first week in June, we will look at the general fund, and that is all we have as far as the budgets for today.
Emily, did you accidentally skip over drainage?
Yeah, it's in there, but I think. Drainage is in there, and I don't think we had, we, let me just double-check and make sure we didn't have any.
Did you want to highlight something, Mike? Okay.
Yeah.
This is Mike's favorite prime time of the year. Don't shortchange on the drainage budget.
We just kind of blew through it because there was no significant changes, but we can dive into it deeper if you'd like. Sounds like you'd like to.
Well, it wasn't, yeah.
Peachnuts.
There was, there was just, everything was exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, sours are cool, but.
Yeah, it was just the standard salary increases and.
It was just the standard salary increases and.
Yeah, I don't think it's pretty much the same.
Was there something that you wanted to highlight or just that we skipped over?
Wanted to make sure.
There's no major changes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Emily, for sitting in the chair and going through all the numbers.
I believe we're ready for Commissioner reports.
Commissioner T. uses this here.
First time you get to go first.
I know, right? It is. He says the next time. Commissioner Dick.
That means I'll get to go first three times in a row.
Yes, you do.
First thing, Micah Bunch with the Chamber of Commerce did text me, and she's on the, leading up that committee for the Hunden report. And she said that we'll be ready on July 12th.
Oh, perfect.
So I just wanted to make sure that we knew that. Congratulations, everybody who went through the Citizens Academy. That's a really big thing, and it's really, get a really good in-depth look at what the city's all about. And glad to see a lot of people going through that to learn more about it. And thanks again to everybody with the city and Jamie and everybody that takes extra time to today to make that all happen. It definitely is worth it. I mean, the people that go through it learn so much. So good stuff all around there. Was able to attend the peace officers memorial. That was good. I'll let Deb talk more about it because she actually had a speak at it. And then finally, just try to go through things quickly here. Attended Matt's induction to the GCHS Hall of Fame ceremony. So congratulations on that. I was thinking about these sorts of things. And my analogy was like, you see somebody, because I was just, I was just watching the NHL playoffs. So you watch a hockey game and you see somebody do something and you're like, that was really cool. They scored a goals. But until you actually understand, like you actually gone through the process, you go through practicing, and you're like, holy cow, what he just did there is amazing. That's what I feel like we get with Matt, where outwardly you're like, wow, he's really good. And we get a lot of good stuff. And I guess this kind of goes in with we're renewing your contract too, so.
Probably done that.
Since we did a first round during the thing as well. But it's one of those things, until you're actually sitting and going to the week after week meeting and seeing all these things and seeing all the issues that come up and don't come up because of things and comparing to other organizations, all this stuff, you really do appreciate what Matt brings to the city. And, and yes, the outward appearance that the general population gets is good, but then when you're actually in it, it's like amazing, all-star. And so being part of the Garden City High School Hall of Fame, very well deserved. We, I mean, we'll put you in line for the Kansas Hall of Fame as well. So that's all I got.
Commissioner Unreal.
Well, I also wanted to say, congratulations to the Citizens Academy. We know it's a lot of time, especially in evenings, especially staff time. So special thanks to all the staff, but and also the energy that they bring to the whole process. I know that really makes the Citizens Academy something that's just a standout program. I don't know how many other communities do this type of a program, but I mean, it is really an opportunity to not only appreciate Garden City, but also to appreciate what we have as a city. So, and all of the citizens, 21 is an incredible class. That's congratulations. That's, that's a lot of people to really make sure that you're getting in the right place at the right time and then making sure you don't leave anybody behind. I almost got stuck in the airport because it was so fast. The tower was really cool, so that was really nice. I had never been up there. I don't know if you ever get to go up there unless you're in the Citizens Academy or not. So I also wanted to say, congratulations to Matt. That is an incredible honor to graduate from the, you know, Garden City, but also to be selected for the Garden City Hall of Fame. So unfortunately, I was out of town for your induction, but I did want to say congratulations. And we are super proud of not only you, but also what you bring to our organization and how you, how you, in the community, how you really are showing, you know, what Garden City needs to be like. I also wanted to say thank you to each and every one of those entities and individuals who put in proposals. It's a lot of work to put in a proposal, and it also takes a little bit of courage to stand up and say, hey, these are the things I really want to do. And so I really just want to say thank you. And I know that there was some direction, but again, I really appreciate that. We, when you're doing things downtown or you're doing things this big, and when you look at the budgets, you really want to get that right. So I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of them, and we're excited about that. I was really excited about, we are one step closer to the fire station. So I drive by there every once in a while, and I was like, oh yeah, there's going to be a fire station there someday. So, but you know, when you drive around town and seeing everything that's happening, they're finally getting the poles up. I knew that they were doing a lot with the stoplights or the traffic signals out there on Mary Street, and I just lost it in the street, Kansas Avenue, sorry. But I'm really excited to see those kind of things come. And then when the, when the cones disappear, I'm really thankful. I have a hard time when the cones, I, yeah, hard time saying, sometimes the speed changes change very quickly, and so I'm, I'm trying to behave myself when it, when it comes to those. So I just wanted to say thank you and for all of the workers and the safety that they're doing, keeping us all as a, as a community safe. Also, I really wanted to say thank you and appreciated for the rain. It was absolutely incredible. Garden City, this is what we need to tell people this looks like. And so, you know, take a bunch of pictures. This is what Garden City looks like all the time, because there are some views that we are more brown than green, but this year is the exception. So I just wanted to say thank you and make sure you get outside. It's been really wonderful, especially the mornings and the evenings.
Commissioner Sesna.
Just want to congratulate Matt Allen and Major Jordan Nichols on their induction into the Garden City High School Hall of Fame. Two outstanding alumni. Every year we induct one in town and one out of town inductee. Just shows the graduating class, two positive role models, that you can either be successful in Garden City or be successful anywhere in the world after you graduate from Garden City High School. So congratulations to those two. Graduation was very successful. We had 440-some graduates plus another 106 from Garden City Achieve, as well as the Virtual Academy this year. So congratulations to all the graduates and their future success. Tomorrow is the last day of school for Garden City Public Schools. Kids as well as staff are getting excited for that. And just like the other commissioners noted, Citizens Academy, it's a great way to see how a first-class city is run and how things operate behind the scenes. Gives us, I've gone through it, gives me a better idea on, you know, when staff's talking about things, and it gives me a better idea to understand what, how things function. So if you've missed out or would like to take the, be in part of it, it's a great opportunity to really get that behind-the-scenes look and feel of how the community operates. And, yep, that's all I've got.
Okay. Yes, I wanted to definitely recognize Matt as well, and I think, well, and also Major Jordan Nichols. One of the things that I think stands out is the fact that you can really kind of tell the story of somebody based on who shows up, when you get to be, you know, awarded something like that. And the number of past commissioners and past mayors, and the fact that there were people who were willing to drive from out of town to come, and the amount of staff present in the past that have, that showed up, I thought it was just a great turnout. Not only that, but to see, you know, for Major Nichols, to see his classmates from college come and, you know, he had most of his family there. And it's just a nice opportunity to really, you know, because we get to see some of these people on a daily basis or on a pretty regular basis, and to see that from the outside, it just sort of reinforces how we feel. So I thought that that was just a really special evening for you. And I also understand that you sang part of the graduation address, and I've had more people come up to me since then to say, I had no idea Matt could sing. And so I thought that was pretty funny. I'd also wanted to mention, yeah, I had an opportunity to go to the peace officer memorial service, and Captain Pruitt and Aaron, they just did such a great job putting that together and all the speakers. But it just kind of brings home just how, you know, how important their jobs are and, you know, how they're willing to, just at a moment's notice, just sacrifice everything and just, you know, put their lives on the line for the community on a pretty regular basis. And so, you know, we definitely want to thank all of the first responders for everything that they do. You know, the goal, of course, is to always come home at the end of their shifts, especially to their families and to those families who have fallen, you know, to remember them because, you know, it's the ultimate sacrifice. And so it's just a very nice ceremony, a very good turnout from the community as well. And so thank you to all who put that on. Congratulations to Buffalo Dunes for the Tourism Award. We look forward to celebrating that as well. And so with that, the meeting is adjourned.